We'll get our meeting started, please.
Sure. Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, July 17th, 2019 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, thank you for the moment. We ask that we remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, those that have lost loved ones since the last time they were in these chambers. And we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the right information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes from the city council meeting of Wednesday, July 3rd, 2019, and bills for payment on July 12th and 19th, 2019. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce our mayor, Joe Schember, to present our 2019 mid-year budget.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. Everything my team and I do relates back to the six words that are our mission statement. I know you've heard them before, but "Build opportunity, restore hope, transform Erie." Our vision is a little more specific. Erie is a community of choice. We celebrate our rich cultural diversity, our welcoming vibrant neighborhoods, our world-class downtown and bayfront, our excellent education for everyone, and our abundance of good family-sustaining jobs. City finances are extremely important if we're going to live the mission and achieve the vision. If the city is financially strong, we can transform Erie much more quickly and completely. My commitment to being open, honest, transparent, and accessible with you at all times continues, including when discussing the city budget. The six-month financial numbers that Paul Lichtenwalder and his team prepared and you received today are exactly that. Next, I'd like to give you a brief overview of the report. The very first page, which doesn't have a number on it, it looks like that, that gives you an overview of where we are with 2019 revenues and expenses through June 30th of this year. The first number, the first number column on that page shows you the budget for each revenue and expense category. The second column shows you the dollar amount of revenues or expenditures through June 30th, 2019. Third column shows the balance yet to be collected or spent. The fourth column shows the percentage of the budget collected or spent so far. But the last two columns are, I'd say, the most important. The second-last column, Finance has projected what the balance will be for each category of revenue and expense on December 31st, 2019. The last column, excuse me, the second-last column, Finance has projected the balance will be revenue expenses out of 1231 in 2019. The last column shows you the variance from the 1231 projection from budget. You will note, we are projec-- we have projected earnings of $634,896 less than budgeted in revenue, and spending of $715,876 less than budgeted in expense. So we're projecting a small surplus this year of little over $80,000, $80,981. On the revenue side, there are two major areas we expect to be below budget. The first is the shortage in taxes of, you'll see on that very first page, $1,056,606. This is primarily due to a lag in the income tax collection process. Because the income tax increase was not finally passed until January this year, Berchheimer has been struggling a little bit to get systems in place to collect the tax from all the employers. If you look at Page 1, which is the next page, you'll see that we are projecting a variance in income tax collections of $1,280,238. This will eventually get caught up, but it may not be until January of next year, from what we're hearing. The second major negative variance in revenue is in licenses and permitting. This is back on the first page again. We are projecting that this may be short, as you can see, $827,593. Now, this deficit may be largely due to commercial and residential investors waiting for the passage of the new LERTA, which took effect here in July. This shortage could also shrink as people apply for building permits under the new LERTA. In fact, let me give you an update on the new LERTA. As of the close of business today, we have received applications for six commercial LERTAs with, for projects with total expenses of $837,798. We've also received applications for 10 residential LERTA permits for projects totaling $4,450,183. So that's a total during the first 12 business days of July of 16 LERTA permits that have been issued totaling $5,287,981.
Mayor, can you tell us, I don't want to, before you get away from LERTA--
If you can hold your questions until after, I'd appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you. Again, so that's a total during the first 12 business days of July of 16 permits issued for $5,287,981. That means we've also collected $850 in fees that will go into our new community reinvestment fund. LERTA is off to a very good start. One last thing on the revenue side. If you look at the fourth line under Taxes, and again, this is back on Page 1 again, the second page with numbers on it, you'll note that $500,000 of our 2019 revenue is in a portion of the fund balance from our reserves. Our goal is to not have to do this. To avoid it, we need to increase revenue and decrease expenses by a total of about $419,019 over the course of the last six months this year. And we're going to work hard to do that. On the expense side, back on the first page again now, you can see that every expense category is below budget except for operating transfers to debt service, which will come in right at budget. We're working hard to control expenses. As you know, salary and benefits make up 87% of our expense budget. 58% of our projected expense savings in 2019 are in the areas of salary and benefit. We hope to increase that savings as well over the last six months. One of our fastest-growing expenses is the city's contribution to pension funds, and I think you're all well aware. This year, the city must contribute $15,299,399 in pensions. Without change, that forecast, that contribution is forecast to grow to $28,662,434 in five years. That's an increase of over $13 million. We are expecting to hear an analysis and some alternatives from Don Betker at Betker and Associates within the next month or so. We'll keep you posted on what we learn on this important expense item. For decades, the city expenses have been growing faster than revenue. Over the last 15 years, expenses have been up 3% to 4% a year while revenue is growing at less than 1% a year. We need to bring expense growth down and revenue growth up. So how do we do that? As you know, Public Finance Management, or PFM for short, who presented their initial historical analysis of the city's finances to you in June, is taking an objective look at our situation and putting together an early intervention plan for us that will address these budget issues. Two PFM reps were here this week, and will be back the next two weeks conducting interviews while doing extensive research and analysis. From what they've told us, they're getting very good cooperation and making quick progress much quicker than they expected. So we expect to have some detailed recommendations from them sometime during September. I have committed publicly to implementing the recommendations PFM makes to us unless there's a good reason that we can't. As we get input from PFM, we will share that with you in our monthly update meetings. In conclusion, there is no secret that the city of Erie is facing financial challenges that are not easy to solve, but they are solvable. I am committed to keep you informed and involved in the process. I welcome your input and advice. Also, as soon as we have PFM's recommendations, I hope to begin the 2020 budget conversations with you at least a month earlier than next year. I want you all to be part of the solution. I have a copy of this speech that I'll pass, you can pass it down in each half, because I know it's probably hard to listen and gather everything in, but I'm happy to respond to any questions you might have at this time.
My question is about the LERTA--
Ms. Allen, please.
Okay.
I appreciate the, I want, I'm gonna ask council to please, in a professional polite manner, ask the question, any question you have to the mayor and/or our finance director, and please let them answer before we interrupt the answer they're trying to give. So with that being said, Ms. Allen, you have--
My question is about LERTA and what plans you have to make it transparent about who is applied for LERTA. As you know, other cities do put that information online, so could you let us know? I guess I'm surprised at the high number for residential, so I think it'd be really helpful for us to know who's getting LERTA. So what are your plans for that?
I'm not sure. I haven't really had a conversation about that yet, but we certainly will.
When will we know?
I'm not sure, to be honest.
Okay, so could you give us a little bit more information? You said 4.4 million in residential LERTA. That, does that strike anybody else as a lot? Could you tell us a little bit about what that is?
I can tell you that about 4 million of it is two major projects.
Can you tell us what they are?
I prefer not to. I want to talk to our solicitor and see what, you know, what we should and shouldn't be--
That information should be public, so I hope, I hope that there is a plan in place to let us know who's applying for LERTA.
It is public information, yeah, absolutely.
And I'm sure that information will be readily available. Today, we're mainly concentrating on our mid-year budget report, where we stand. It's great to hear that the LERTA has gotten a great kickstart, but with that being said, I hope within the next month to six weeks or whatever, we will know who possibly some of these new LERTA people are.
Sure. It should be quicker than that, I would say.
Any other questions from council?
I'm, so when is, Pete, when are we gonna get the report from the financial consultants?
It'll probably be sometime in September.
Okay, and so when will budget, the budget process begin then?
I said, I hope to start at least a month early. I think we started it, like, at the beginning of November, so I'd hope at least at the beginning of October.
And Mayor Joe, the pilots that are due would like to come around Christmas time? It says 88% payment in lieu of taxes that have been collected, but then, you know, the projection, so they come around Christmas time?
Kathy, I'm, I, off the top of my head, I don't know who that $119,000 is that hasn't paid yet, but normally those things come in throughout the year. So, I mean, next week, or in two weeks, the Finance Committee meeting, I can give you a list of, and as you remember in your budget handout book that lists who that $900,000 are, I'll figure out and get you an update on who hasn't paid yet. But Mrs. De Vecchio kind of takes care of that every year, and we've really never had any problem with any of the pilots not paying their agreement. So we're absolutely confident they'll all pay.
Thank you. But just for the public information, Paul, can you say, what you said at that Finance Committee two weeks ago, our collection rate on real estate taxes is generally about 90%, correct?
In that neighborhood.
Okay, and so we also, I haven't had a chance to follow up with Sue De Vecchio, but that means, I believe that you also said that that means generally about 10% of those who have had LERTA and LERTAs expired, they, and they don't end up paying, or they, they wait a couple of years or something?
Well, that could be 10% of anyone that doesn't, that gets their annual bill. So I get my bill, 10% of me doesn't pay each year, and after three years, that goes over to the tax claim.
Okay, but I had asked a question of whether we could know, but I must admit, I haven't had a chance to follow up. You suggested I ask Sue De Vecchio for a list of any LERTA recipients where the LERTA had expired and we, they were not yet paying taxes as they were supposed to. So I just wanted the public to know that I intend to follow up on that.
Thank you. Anybody else, council? Mayor, thank you for your time this evening. It's nice to hear that there's always a possible surplus, even if it is small. Hopefully, come year's end, it'll be better than that, but at least we're heading in the right direction with that. Thank you for your time. Rose, what's that, bring us to repository sales?
Yes, Mr. President.
Do we have anybody here this evening to speak upon a repository sale? Please step forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is William Berger. I'm a local real estate developer. I'm in residential real estate mostly. I'm trying to buy a parcel at 240 East 24th, which is, happens to be contiguous to three other parcels that I own currently. Basically, my plans for the parcel are just to maintain it as a green space for the community
Ms. Allen, you're up on--
Could you tell us what your plans are, and if you have the resources, and if you have a timeline for when you'll complete what you want to do?
Well, I'm just, I'm just maintaining the place as a public, basically as a, my own private public park sort of in there, and I don't have any plans to develop it or not. Yeah, I certainly have ample resources to take care of the place.
Thank you. We ask everybody the same question, so we can kind of keep track, okay?
What was that address?
240 East 24th Street. It's currently just a gra, it's a lawn, basically.
Have you maintained it in the past?
Not that, but I have been maintaining the lots, as I said, the one right next door, and then there's two on East 23rd Street that I own that are sort of like in a zigzag right behind it, and I maintain those.
And your resident address is?
2141 Robin Drive, 16505.
That's nice. Do you let children play around in there, too?
Sure.
That's very--
I think actually what I might do is, I'm thinking in terms of possibly putting in swing set, you know, a few things like that. Like I saw down on the bayfront, there's an organization that has a big green space down there where they got some bike racks and different things like that, and I might be up for doing that, too, also, in this, in this particular space.
Thank you for considering investing in the city and--
I have been doing quite a lot of that, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for having me and thank you for considering my request.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter. We own the property at 2012. I obtained the property at 2013, O'Naiter Street, which is right behind the house. It's pretty much just a lot, like, grass and stuff like that. Been cutting it for the last 12 years, so I didn't have no idea this, I could get this this way. So I was telling my wife, you know, we have a lot of problems in the wintertime, based on the snow piles. There's only one place you can park on 12th Street. I don't know if you've been out towards Franklin Terrace or not, but it's a little section near with houses. But the snow piles up to the doors, and we come out, we dig a snowstorm right back in the street, so it's defeating the purpose. So I figured, put a two-car parking space back there, and the rest I'll use for gardening, you know, keep cleaning. And that's about it. I mean, I have no special plans or anything to do different with the property, because it's been the same way for years.
And you have a timeline for, like, what you're gonna do?
Actually, as soon as I, if I get approved for this, this will be done the first week I get the paper. The first week, the first week. So I already got it set up, you know. It's, it's beautiful, it's, you know, lady next door got flowers, but grass grow, I go cut it, because I gotta learn, so lawn care business, so it's easy for me to cut it. And I figure, hey, I can do this with this. Cars won't get snowed in, I don't have to dig it out. So that's about it.
It really does make a difference, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right.
Any other repositories this evening? Any other repository sales this evening? Hearing none, that brings us to citizens to be heard.
My name is Julia Calippo, I reside here in Erie, California. I was recently, I'm recently moved to Springfield, and I have a bit of a horror story for you. On February 18th of 2016, there was a home fire at 32nd and Holland at my residence. I was nine months pregnant, I had my children with me, we resided there. 14 hours later, my home was bulldozed flat by your fire department, Guy Santone, and any causation of fire, anything that I had that was personal belongings was bulldozed flat by your fire department. He refused to investigate it, and he advised Allstate to hire their own investigators to come and investigate the rubble.
Paul, excuse me.
And the issue is exactly this, that they waited 50 days, Allstate waited 50 days before they even did an investigation, which would have been April 9th of 2015. So after 50 days of rain, snow, ice, and Erie Fire Department refusing to investigate it, Allstate came, and when Allstate did this investigation, they pulled a flat oven out of a flat site of ashes, and they alleged that I set my house on fire with an oven and an aerosol can, whereupon I had no idea. I had given birth to my baby one week after my fire. We were just trying to recover, you know, get baby stuff, get a place to live, whatever. I lived in Erie for five months with my children. We moved to Florida for five months, and then I was surprise arrested in Florida by the Erie police, who had issued a warrant for arson in regards to a fire that they bulldozed and never investigated. I was convicted while I was hospitalized after cruel treatment at Erie County Prison. And I am here for an inconvenient truth, to let you know that corruption is rampant within the city of Erie. And I just sat three and a half years in jail because Judge Brabender convicted me while I was hospitalized, which had happened the entire month of my trial. It was an injustice. It's disgusting. I've had concealed court records where the transcription office here at Erie County refuses to give me my records for my appeals. I have filed appeals with Superior Supreme, and I am now in federal courts fighting to clear my name, to prove that I did not commit arson. And I will win. I will not be silenced anymore. I have access to the resources, and I'm going to let people know exactly what happened here, that you, your city is receiving payoffs from Allstate Corporation, which is the worst corporation in the United States, and they have purchased the Roar on the Shore itself. Allstate is your main funder of this event. I'm here to say that I have nothing. I don't know where my children are, I don't know if they're alive, I don't know if they're dead. My baby was adopted out. I have nothing. And I'm here to say that I'm not going away, and I want you guys to step up and do your part to make sure that the courts don't do this to other innocent people here in Erie, violate their constitutional rights, illegally convict them for investigations that they did not do, because it's un-American, and it's not something that Erie should be popular or well-known for, is illegally convicting people or taking away their rights in regards to. I had filed a lawsuit against Erie County Prison for mistreatment, and I'm in habeas court right now, and hopefully, this is gonna get resolved. Either way, I'm here to say that justice has not been served, but it will be, I assure you. And my name is Julia Calippo, and I welcome anybody to visit me on Facebook to interact or to learn the components and the individuals who interacted in this case and absolutely convicted me illegally. And I welcome any comments anybody has. Anybody? No?
When did this happen?
This, this hap, my fire was February 18th of 2015. An Erie Fire Department bulldozed it 14 hours later as it was still burning, and refused to investigate it. And then the investigation was 50 days later on April 9th. I will be scanning and uploading documents to the internet. You guys can feel free to view all my lawsuits. They will be visible and on different websites in probably the next two weeks. I look forward to hearing from everybody and having your advocacy work for people of Erie. Have a great night.
That's okay.
Can I hold it?
Sure.
My name is Joe Mitchell, I live at 304, Boston Store Place, Erie PA. And he's with VFI, he's, he's my, the guy that helps out. Name is Ryan, enter line. And I have some concerns, I was kind of hoping that the mayor is gonna be here. My concerns are, I'm in a wheelchair, as you can see. I was in a, I was never always in a wheelchair. At one time, I played for Erie Jets and for Erie Rugby Club, and coached soccer, coached for JFK Center, coached a lot of children's youth sports. Things change. I got an illness, now I'm in a wheelchair. But it's funny how, when you can walk around and run around, you're put in a chair, you see things differently now. I've been in a chair for about three years now. And I used to live in Millcrick, and I moved to the Boston Store to make my life easier. I love downtown Erie, it's a beautiful place, but we have some issues. And you can talk to any one of the disabled people that ride in wheelchairs, or senior citizens, or even the, the daycare workers that push the baby buggies on the sidewalks. Most of the sidewalks are in pretty good shape, from like French to Peach Street, 3rd to 14th. There are some businesses where there might be one or two spent slabs that are off-centered, and what happens is, when you're in a big mobility chair like this, if you don't hit them straight on, you're gonna tip over. And every week, there's a wheelchair laying on its side, we're trying to pick the guy back out of the lady, put him back in the wheelchair. And it just happened by the daycare across the street. And that's, the one across the street, right, 7th, 7th Street and State, that corner walk has been tore up for, Monday will be a month, okay? And we have some major issues there. To get to front of the city hall, we have to go into the road, from the daycare entrance into the road, and we're, a lot of times, we're blinded, because we can't see a traffic was coming. Someone's gonna get hit, you know, a lot of people almost do get hit. You gotta like edge out and like kind of peek around. And I just can't believe why they wouldn't start that project in the spring or first of the summer, but why wait until July when downtown Erie is the busiest? You know, there's things going on all the time, and that's a very, very bad danger zone. Okay, and then Liberty Park is another issue. You know, I'm supposed to have a better quality of life, like you guys. You guys can do whatever you want. How many of you go to eight great Tuesdays? I would have liked to go on last night to listen to the, to the Journey Band, cover band. I can't get there. Two ways for me to get there. 6th Street on the bumpy sidewalks that you can't ride on, it's like a roller coaster, and they're all off-centered. You can't ride on the road, okay, they zip down 6th Street, or I can go down Stage Street, down the sidewalk to the bayfront, cross the bayfront, look out for the people doing the left turns and the right turns, going south. And then there's a, there's a way to go, you gotta go down where the bait shop is, press, go bait and tackle, and there's a road that goes there, and it's, it's kind of dangerous, because people take that road home, and they fly up that, that road, and it's got a real bad turn on it at the top, okay, by the, by the putt putt golf course. And for us to go down that road, we have to hug the right side of the road, because there's a, if you don't, you're in the road and you're gonna get hit. But guess what? There's a big pothole on the right side of the road. So you can't ride the right side-- So you can't ride the right side of the road, you gotta ride the road. Just to get out in front of the convention center, to continue down the sidewalk, to get to Liberty Park. I don't understand why they couldn't put a sidewalk in from Stage Street to in front of, in front of the convention center. It couldn't cost that much more money to put in a, a sidewalk. Now there's not, I mean, how are we supposed to get over there to, to enjoy Liberty Park, like anybody else? You know, like the mayor, he has these certain communities that he likes to talk to. Like the New Americans, which I'm all, everything I'm telling you, I'm okay with everything, except for, we have this ca- concerns as disabled people. You've got the New Americans, you've got the LGBT. Oh, I'm done. But anyhow, I was just wondering that if there's ways to take care of things, why can't we start a task force? And I would like one of you council members, or the mayor, you'll provide the wheelchair, look at things from our point of view, it'll scare the crap out of you. Especially on the uneven sidewalks. They're horrible.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Ms. Schaff did have a point here, she'd like to, uh...
Sir, um, there is a disability roundtable that is being held once a month that perhaps you would like to attend at, uh, the Intermodal Center. I believe it's tomorrow at two o'clock. Uh, Mr. Moss Sela hosts it every month, and Mrs. Schember or Mr. Schember usually attends as well. And, uh, at that time, um, the people address their, uh, physical disability issues that they have in movement and things. I've attended, um, on several occasions, but, um, that's something that you might want to look into.
All right, well, I will look into that, and it's, I'm speaking for a group of people. Where I live, there's many, many disabled people in wheelchairs. They don't wanna come over, today I wanted to come over, but, then they don't wanna come over. But, you know, then there's what, seven apartment houses here that have disabled people and seniors. It's gotta be easier, I don't think it costs that much money to fix those sidewalks. Even you can get into the Chinese restaurant, it's gotta stand that high. I'd like to go in here and sit down and have a buffet down there. All you gotta do is get a little ramp, don't, uh, Tractor Supply sells the ramps at fifty bucks, I called today. And all they gotta do is, businesses at night is take the ramp out, put it inside the business, no one steals it. You know, it'd make our life a little bit easier. And maybe by going to that meeting you just said, I can express those, no problem. But all those, all those storefronts pretty much in the same way. But you know, but you're in a wheelchair, most of the people, they do help you. You know, probably about ninety percent. Then you get that ten percent, they're just, they ruin your day. You know? And I did talk to the mayor before, when he walked up the street, so he knows, I do express my, my views with him, but, you know, I know he can only do so much. Maybe we could just use some of that seventy thousand.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Do we have any other citizens to be heard this evening?
Hi, I'm Jessie Nelson. Um, I gave everyone a piece of paper in front of them, I'm just gonna go ahead and read it. Uh, I'm the owner of her home, it's a three-quarter house for women. Um, substance addiction is a pervasive disease in our culture that affects people from all walks of life. It is a public health crisis, as designated by the CDC. Currently, a gap exists between early recovery, sustaining a clean and sober lifestyle thereafter. The process of healing begins with intensive treatment options. As the individual makes healthy progress in staying clean and sober, the availability of a transitional opportunity for independently re-entering society is needed greatly. Three-quarter houses provides that crucial bridge to independence, successfully pairing a support system with a reduced level of supervision. Without a three-quarter home to ease addicts into independent living, many are forced back into the same environment that initially fostered their disease, or their addiction, thus resulting in a high frequency of relapse shortly thereafter. The demand is high for these vital three-quarter homes, especially for women of Erie County. Her home empowers recovering women to reach their full potential by providing that last essential bridge to a new life. This transitional living home consists of several units that only women who are living a drug and alcohol-free life may apply for. Women who are living in her home will be provided a stable, less restrictive environment where they can heal and grow. These women will be given the opportunity to live within a supportive group setting while benefiting from affordable housing, which will help them to manage the daily demands of life. Their rent will include all necessary amenities and utilities, and no lease terms are required as long as they follow all house rules. Each resident will be surrounded by other women who are just as determined to maintain their recovery. All women who make it to this stage desperately want to live a healthy, purposeful life. Her home is their last essential bridge to becoming a productive member of society once again. And I, um, wanted to bring this to the city council, I wanted to let you know what I'm doing. Um, I, um, I've been in recovery for fifteen years myself, so, and I also went to college for this, uh, for counseling. I've worked at Goodunzia, um, the Rehabilitation Center, as a counselor and as a case manager, um, for, uh, pregnant addicted women. Um, and, um, so not only do I have the backbone to do this, but I have the experience. Um, and, um, and I was able to purchase this home. I like that it's, um, women, for women, by women, owned, you know, um, from a woman. And, um, what I'm doing currently now is, I am, um, really just reaching out to the community, um, because I bought this really big home, it's, it's three stories, um, I can house up to sixteen women. Um, and it's just got beautiful bones, and it's in Erie, and I'm restoring the house itself. And it's been sitting there for four years, I mean, just garbage was all over the place, and cleaning up the house as well. And, um, I'm having women from the community house, from Goodunzia, come and do community service. Um, and they, it's just, I didn't really believe how, um, much of an impact. I knew that this was so necessary, because Erie doesn't have three-quarter homes. And, um, and how vital it was, because what I was doing was, I was seeing these women, um, in and out, you know, relapsing constantly, and then what happened was, with the fentanyl, now I'm going to their funerals, at least once a week. And, um, and so I felt like this was, um, my time to bring all that together, my experience, my education, um, my hu- I'm able to, my husband has a good job, so I'm able to do this. I think with all of it combined together, it was just the perfect formula. Um, and so where I'm at today is, um, I'm, I haven't opened up the doors. Um, my neighborhood is actually zoned for, um, all of it is a R three. It's right on the bus line, right on Walnut Street, um, right by, um, the Dollar General there. It's right next to the Dollar General, so it's perfect, most of these women don't drive. Um, and, um, I, I researched and found out I am, I'm zoned for R two. Um, I am actually going to the variance hearing, um, August thirteenth at one PM here. Um, and I'm gonna ask for, to be, um, an R three, and also have the parking waived, that variance waived as well. I have six spots in my, in the back of my house, um, and also, um, um, Dollar General told me that we could use their space, um, but most of these women don't drive anyways, and they won't be driving. They don't have their license for many years. So our house is going to be, um, it is, and, and this is really important too, that I wanna, um, explain that this is something that not too many people get into, adventure into, because, um, first of all, you have to have the experience, you have to have all that stuff that I'm able to bring to the table. And, um, it's, um, not a moneymaker. This, this is an LLC, but there is absolutely no money in this, this is truly, um, a mother tree submission. And what I ideally hope to do is to have this house run itself. Um, I am considered an R two, like I said, and I can only have six unrelated, um, residents in the house, and therefore I cannot, it will not run itself. I'm gonna have to pay out of pocket, and I just, I can't do that, I can't, can't afford to do that. Um, so ideally, I would like to get, um, the, the amount of women that it will hold per code. Thank you. Any questions?
What was the address, I mean roughly, is Eighth and Walnut?
It's Eighth and Walnut, it's seven fifteen Walnut. Yeah. And it's a big, beautiful house.
Jessie, I've heard about these homes, I believe that they have, I've read stories about them in southeastern Pennsylvania. So where would be the closest three-quarter house to Erie? Um, do you know where else in Pennsylvania there might be?
Yes, I'm actually, I, I joined the West Par in Pittsburgh, because that was how I, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, I'm just trying to, you know, do what works. And so I went down and, and joined that organization, and what that is, is, um, I would say all the three-quarter houses that are legitimate, you know, that are, that wanna be on paper and wanna show you what they're doing, and it's a nonprofit organization, and we kind of, um, help each other and, um, and work through, I think, the umbrella of, through Pittsburgh. It's called, um, Par. I'm not sure what that stands for.
Yeah, I, I know, I had judged a journalism contest, and, and, um, the woman who won, um, had written about the program in, I think, probably Bucks County, I think.
Yes.
And there were some really good programs, but there were also some that had problems.
Yes, yes, and that's why I'm doing everything on the up and up. Um, I choose not to be a nonprofit only because, I, you know, this is gonna be something that I'm gonna do lifelong, this house, but I don't know if I can handle another house, so if I do, I will go nonprofit, but there's no sense in doing that with one, one unit, so...
I think that's very awesome and courageous of you, and knowing your daughter, um, who's very artistic. I'm, I'm sure you're going to bring a lot of wonderful things to that place, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. President, are you, are you connected with the R West Bay Front group?
I actually just emailed, um, Amanda, I just emailed her yesterday, because somebody told me about that, and to, um, so I sent her all that information yesterday. I haven't heard back from her yet, though.
That'd be a good connection, I think, right in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard this evening? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing no more, uh, we'll move on with the agenda.
Ordinances for final passage, Council File sixteen one eleven. An ordinance appropriating the sum of three hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of GLG twenty seventeen Green Light Go Pro Program, Signal Upgrade, East Tenth Street and Holland Street. By Mr. Witherspoon, sec by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Bill number sixteen one eleven, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number forty-nine twenty nineteen, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kowalski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number forty-nine twenty nineteen, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File sixteen one twelve, an ordinance appropriating the sum of eight thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue from Star Athletic Club for the Bureau of Fire of the City of Erie. By Mr. Jones, sec by Mrs. Arrington, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number sixteen one twelve, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number fifty twenty nineteen, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kowalski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number fifty twenty nineteen, finally by a seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number sixteen one thirteen, an ordinance in accordance with the twenty nineteen City of Erie General Fund budget, the sum of forty thousand dollars that was appropriated from unappropriated and anticipated revenue for use by the City of Erie. By Mr. Kowalski, sec by Mr. Jones, the Council File Ordinance Number sixteen one thirteen, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kowalski.
Mr. President, um, sometimes, you know, I've read a million of these agendas and all of that. This one, uh, I did second it, but, you know, I think that, I'm sure it's appropriate, but it's very vague. Is there, can someone speak a little bit to exactly what that is?
Um, the mayor probably could if he wouldn't mind, it's, it's regarding the, um, Count Me In Initiative. I, I have a letter here, if you'd rather I read that, or if you can address it.
I could try and address it.
Well, you can address, or I can just, maybe I missed something, because sometimes I don't get all the memos, or I don't see them, I know you all send them. So I, it was just, in the, the reading was like, you know, ordinance, Erie, you know, two thousand nineteen City of Erie General Fund appropriated some forty thousand dollars to be used by the City of Erie. That was just like, a weird language for me.
Yes, there was a memo with that, apparently you didn't get it, so...
I, I probably got it, uh, but didn't see it, to be honest, so, um, as long as it's, there's the backup that goes along with it, I'm very comfortable, we don't have to rehearse it all, but just in the reading of it, it just read weird to me, uh, hearing it out loud, so...
It's basically a follow-up in the East Bay Front neighborhood of, you know, with the door-to-door we did last year.
Right.
Uh, UPMC Health, funded most of this, and got a real detailed survey going that we're, we're really anticipating can help us in that neighborhood, make it more welcoming and vibrant.
Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number sixteen one thirteen, by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File sixteen one fourteen, an ordinance appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of Cranberry area pedestrian improvements.
Mr. President, is this a PennDOT project? Or is this a project the city is doing?
It says PennDOT reimbursement agreement. Let me see if I have a memo. I don't think that had a memo with it, Mel. Let me just check.
You switched it up pretty quick.
Oh, yeah, here we go. Um, this is a, a project that, um, is from an operating grant from PennDOT, and this, um, put in, um, sidewalks and curbs around from Second, or, uh, Third and Cran- Fourth and Cranberry, all the way over Fourth down to Third, past my house, but they didn't put curbs in there, and then down to Second and Libra, or past Eight Street.
Yes, my question is...
The question was, it came from an operating grant from PennDOT.
Okay, and we, did we hire the local folks?
Yeah, it was Vivala Concrete Construction.
Okay, then my question is, are we following, are we following up on minority hiring? When we give these contracts out?
I don't have enough information in the memo about that.
I'm just speaking in the air.
Okay.
Just, just, you know, I'm gonna be watching that, you know, I looked at the project, they, uh, Mayor brothers, they had five folks out there, I hadn't seen nobody. So when we start giving out contracts, they gotta have, they got five, give me one. So when we start giving our contracts, they gotta have, they got five, give me one. If they don't have it, I'll find them for you.
Well, I can tell you from personal experience, from living right in the area where they're doing the work, there was black people working for that company.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. Okay, where was I? Okay. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16114, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16114 by a seven, nay zero, on first That'll take us into new business, Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. President, well, you almost, it was almost like you knew what was coming. I would like to move the balance of the agenda.
And I'll second it.
And do we have any separations?
No separations. Moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. And we do have a wave rules, Mr. President. This is a reimbursement agreement that John Tushak got late after we had already put the agenda out. Voting on the wave rules, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. By Mr. Witherspoon, and seconded by Ms. Schaff, that resolved by the Council of the city area, that the mayor and the city controller are hereby authorized to execute the federal aid bridge project reimbursement agreement between the City of Erie and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the City of Erie McDrive-Bride Viaduct East Avenue Bridge. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. And that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Okay. I have a couple of things that I wanna go over. One is, I just wanna point out, sorry that I was like, still trying to catch up on this financial report, and I hope that we end up talking about this, but on page 11, you know, one of my favorite things, the Gulf Fund, which shows a projected surplus, but if you turn to that, you'll notice that the reason there's a projected surplus is because the revenues are, the projection of revenues has been changed. So, you know, you get a surplus, originally in the budget, it was gonna be $540,271 in revenues, and now the projection's $461,415, and then, you know, the revenue. So I just wanna point that out, that, you know, don't just slip that through there and say, hey, we have a projected surplus, when the numbers have been changed. So we can talk about that more at a finance committee meeting. I attended the Blighted Property Review Committee last week, I went to the land bank meeting on Monday, but then I left, we didn't have a quorum, it was supposed to start at 1:00, we didn't have a quorum, and at 1:20, I, I don't know if they ever did get a quorum, I ended up going to the great ribbon cutting with the mayor and all the people from R. West Bayfront at the splash pad, so that, that was a really amazing transformation of that park. If you haven't been there yet, you should make sure you get down there. And I did wanna just urge some caution. I don't know much about this Her Home Healing and Power and Recovery, sounds really good, and the reason I asked whether there, where's the closest place that might have a three-quarter home, and Curtis, thank you for asking, I think you're the one who asked if they were involved with R. West Bayfront, didn't you ask her about that? When, the journalism contest I judged was for the Pennsylvania Bar Association, and the woman from Bucks County Courier Times had done some award-winning work on, they're known by other names, including sober living houses, and there were some serious problems in Bucks County, because they aren't regulated, and there were people who had gone to these recovery homes, hoping to have the exact kind of support that that woman mentioned, and ended up ODing. So I just think it's important to have this on our radar. I think it probably would have been smart to see what that was zoned before you go into something, and then say, okay, it's R2, but I want it to be R3. It sounds really good, but I think, and, and we don't have any, any say over what happens at the zoning hearing board, correct, Ed? I mean, that's out of our hands. Zoning hearing board is...
Correct. Yeah, she indicated that she was gonna change the zone, that would be something that would be done by this council after a public hearing and voted. What she would be asking for is relief, she mentioned the parking, and then the other relief would be the number of non-related family members living in the, in the building. And so it would be, and she would have the power to go to the zoning hearing board, they have that power to grant that relief if it's deemed appropriate, we don't have a say.
Okay, it just seemed like, kinda putting, what's the cliche I could use? Putting the cart before the horse, or whatever, to go and, and get this thing going without knowing what, you know, that you might have to have some changes, so.
Aren't they licensed by the state?
No, I'm just looking at here, it says the Pennsylvania Senate, now this was, this was from 2017, the Pennsylvania Senate has passed a bill that would create voluntary regulations for transitional homes for recovering substance abusers. Now, I don't know, I haven't had a chance, because I'm trying to pay attention to the meeting, to, to find out whether those regulations, those voluntary regulations were adopted. I just wanted to let people know that it's great when people come up to the podium and tell us they have all these great ideas, but we need to make, you know, whatever our due diligence is, we should do it, so, that's my committee report.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I received two calls regarding curb cuts, basically one was 7th, was it 7th State? And the individual was in a wheelchair, lady, and she said, you know, she felt very unsafe for herself, and especially visually impaired individuals as well. And we need to make sure that these contractors are putting up barriers, indicators of some sort, prior to two, three, four feet, prior to a hole being in the ground, so we need to look at that very seriously. Another call was on the curb cuts, that they are not as even as they could be for wheelchairs to get up on the curb, nothing we need to look at. A disappointing report, last, I believe it was last week, we had a stabbing, someone got hurt, died, and I found out last night that it was a east-side, west-side confrontation, which has never died in Erie and is still living. Then there was a drive-by, was related to that retaliation, no one got hurt. But what brings it to my attention is that we have two teams of 13, 14-year-olds at the Bayview Park, and right now they're playing each other. I decided two days ago to bring two of the teams, 13, 14, down to Bayfront, so we can have four teams. And an individual who's been in and out of the system, who gets that information where none of us can get it, he advised me, he said, I wouldn't do that, because you're bringing some kids from the east side to play the kids of the west side. He said, the kids are not the problem. He said, it's the older brothers, the dads, the uncles, that may come with them initially to see the game, but see someone else there that they're looking for. So when I came in tonight, I talked to the officer in charge, gave him the same scenario, and asked him, what do you think? He said, boy, that's a tough one, Mel. I said, well, being that's a tough one, and being that the individual who informed me of the situation, I've decided not to do it. I'd just rather not put the league into that, not put families into it, or put myself in there, because if something happened, folks are gonna say, well, Mel, you, you knew about it. Well, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I think if I just leave the two separate, I think everything will be okay. But other than that, we haven't had any problems at any court this far. It's just packed on 19th Street, families are coming down, they're coming out, we're working with Gannon, we changed our game night for Gannon at Bayview, they have something going on on Wednesday nights, so we wanna combine that, and hopefully we'll pick up some more kids tonight. Merrill Page is overseeing that for me, so let the kids play. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things that I wanted to address, there was a very wonderful, successful AmeriMasala event on Saturday at Perry Square until 6:00 PM, and it was a very hot day, and it was a very wonderful day of music and people being together in a peaceful way, so thank you to Mr. Lynn Johnson, Margarita Dangle, and all the people that were involved with AmeriMasala. Yesterday, I went to the Human Relations Advisory Board meeting, they did not have a quorum either, maybe it's the summer, you know, it's hard to get people together sometimes. I went to the Erie Water Authority meeting, and they mentioned the high water being a concern, if it continues to be so. Noticed that we've had road closures, and I noticed some people trying to go around the road closures, and this can be a dangerous situation, so please adhere to the roads closed sign. Mr. Del Birch is it, from the East Bayfront, I've noticed him a few times, just this evening too, planning and taking care of the flowers at 6th and Parade Street, and then again on Holland and the Bayfront there, so thank you to everyone who beautifies our area in many ways. We have very high temperatures coming up in the forecast for this weekend, and the Gears and Grubs will be in the area with music for that Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so I'm looking forward to attending that. But there is really a need for hydration when the temperatures get so hot, so please, everybody look after your elders and people who need to hydrate in this weather, and that can happen indoors, too. You find people not using air conditioners or fans, and they're just sitting there, but they're not getting up and getting water, so please look after the elderly and the sick and people who need extra care during this high temperature, so that are coming up. And I ran into Joanne Jaska at the Erie Sea Wolves game, and the church groups are in town, and they're doing wonderful helping this week, so thankfully, the weather cooperated today, it was supposed to rain all day, and it ended up being a nice day. Thank you, Mr. Shumber, for the mayoral mid-year report, it's good to have that to give us an idea of what's going on and lies ahead, too. So I just read something about eye contact and how important eye contact is, and it gives a person a sense of purpose and identity, and it really means something to people. So, so often, sometimes we're so busy, and we're walking on our cellphones, and I'm accused of doing that myself, actually, but eye contact is really important, and we need it, so please share the love. Have a great day.
Thank you. Ms. Arrington.
No report, Mr. President.
Mr. Kwiatowski.
You put, you put me on this. Real quick, I wanna thank the hard work by the administration, especially Mr. Betza and Lisa, for working on the parking ticket problem. It was something that this council, one of the things, many years ago, we said we were gonna take care of the garbage problem, parking ticket problem, so we're well on the road to solving those, because that's extra revenue, and the mayor talks about, we need revenue, well, there it is. And we're gonna try to get some of it back where it belongs, in our pockets, you know, it's, it's something that, you know, when people break the law, especially out-of-towners, and they don't pay their parking tickets, we should be a little aggressive. So I wanna thank them for all the hard work, and council for supporting it and falling through. I also agree with Mel and other people that have brought up about the road barrier situation in this town. As you drive around the city, I've driven around other cities, and I don't see the same problem, but you come upon roads that are closed suddenly, construction projects that there's no warning, just like today, coming, coming to City Hall can be a, an interesting experience. You find out there's a road closed, I wonder who okayed it, because I don't know if we have, I think, going along with what Curtis and Liz and I talked about, is maybe we should start charging some fees for this. When we close roads and sidewalks, it puts people at a, at a problem, like, out front here, it's been there a long, you know, and soapbox derby, I hate to say that again, but I was out of town, and I'm coming over 38th Street and find out State Street's closed, and you should see the people just shooting around, lucky there wasn't an accident. We gotta do like the state did, they've been warning people about the VA hospital exit, other towns tell you, you know, this major artery is closed two blocks ahead. Give people a little chance, we don't do that, we need to demand it, maybe we need an ordinance, I don't know. But I can understand the frustration with the people in Erie as they walk around, and some of these curb cuts, the water that collects around them, I, I don't know what happened, but you can't, sometimes you can't get out of your car, you could put a swimming pool in there, but I think we got some work to do, I'm gonna start turning them in, but I get nowhere with it. Finally, to the mayor, one of the things that's bugged me for a long time, and it's right here in black and white, 13% on building and demolition permits. I know some of that's due to LERTA, but I think a lot of it's due to, there's a couple projects which are undervalued, they were reported in Erie paper, and they don't match up with the amount of billing fees we collected, that's lost revenue. We stand to lose about $363,000 on that one account, and I'd like to know, when I come in for a billing permit, how do you interpret, do you take my word for it, or do you actually get a contract or an estimate? Because I know there's a couple of projects, and I pointed out that, one of them very predominant, was in the paper advertised, only to find out that the building permit was issued for less. And as you go around town, you find out, all these buildings on North Park Row and everything, we, we got embarrassed on TV, found out that there was no billing permits issued for many of them, that's lost revenue. And, you know, we can't, we can't be like that no more, I mean, when you do major renovations, we wanna be nice to people, but if you're turning down walls, and you're changing plumbing in there, there should be billing permits issued. I'm sure they don't give you a free ride in Mill Creek, I can almost guarantee that. So when I look at this, I'm a little frustrated, 13%, can't all be due to LERTA, and to end up that short, that take care of a lot of our shortfall. And those are little things that, we gotta start being a little bit more judicious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Jones. No report this evening, Mr. President.
Mr. President, can I, I just wanted to ask one other thing of Mel, you know, when you, and, and Kaz, and everybody talking about the problem with the curb, you know, with the barriers. Fred is not here, because she is at the Community College hearing, but I promised I would mention her idea. Kathy, you talked about the disability roundtable, but it's not just people who are disabled, I mean, the able, able community also has had issue with those curb cuts, and Freda has suggested that we need a pedestrian and bicycle, I don't know if you call it a task force or something, but, so, we should, we should do something. Credit to Freda for coming here, week, you know, meeting after meeting to talk to us about how this is an issue. And that thing at Seventh and State, that, that really was, you know, and the man who was here who talked about having to go down to the driveway of the daycare and go out to cross the street, so what are the solutions? What, what could we do? Is it something where we need, as Kaz said, an ordinance, or do we need to study this? And both the intersections and the street closings, we need to figure out what the best practices are, but how do you think we could do that to, so that we, because we talked about this, and thank you, Mel, for bringing it up again.
I went to a meeting with Patrick Fisher and Neil Woods and Freda this week, and Patrick just sent me an email to Neil and Freda that just addressed this, which I forgot to mention. But that is, yeah.
So, he has some ideas?
Yes, yes.
And Patrick's survey?
Patrick is the director of Erie Arts and Culture, so, okay, so we have some resources to start with. If it's something, is it ordinance covered, or?
Well, maybe. I mean, you, you control your own roads, so that would not appear to me to be something that would be an ordinance to make a rule for yourself. With sidewalks that may involve an ordinance where people are controlling their own sidewalks, I can put them in, I can tear them out and replace them, we have standards for sidewalks, we may want to look at those provisions, see if there's something that should be amended. So, when I say it may, I don't see it for road closures, we control our own road closures. So, if we're gonna close a road, whether it could be for a community block party, or if we're gonna close it because there's repairs, we set the standard. We can do that every time. But sidewalks might involve some type of...
Or... Can we make the responsibility of the business owner? That his or her sidewalk? I got a business and it's all messed up.
It, it, that's currently the way it is. You're responsible for your sidewalk.
Can we send them a notice?
Absolutely.
Say, hey, you have thirty days to do something.
That's exactly...
Part of that, you have the disability roundtable meeting, is it with the mayor? They have that? I mean, isn't that something that could be brought up there, and then if there's an issue of a certain property or corner or whatever, bring it up there and see if there's a solution with outgoing too drastic, I guess. In the same breath, if we have to do an ordinance, that can be done, but I don't know if it's only because of one or two or three instances over a 10-year span, or if it's something that's been an ongoing issue.
People should really call Citizens Response Center. Don't wait for a meeting, call the Citizens Response Center, 870-1111, and report any problems like that.
I forgot something, Mr. President, if I could add.
Sure.
I attended the City Planning Commission, and Mr. Klecker is going to volunteer his time for the historic preservation. So, he's going to be on that availability. Right, right, for the city planning, or as a representative from the city planning. And a reminder that we have a study session tomorrow for one hour, thank you.
Thank you. Just a very few items, just like the mayor said, our Citizens Response Center, I've, for the first time this week, I, I called it myself. Normally, when I got a phone call, or a concern, or a complaint, I probably normally went to the department, had a try, tried to do it the quickest and easiest way to get something handled. But I thought, this time around, just because, I mean, numerous lawns, abandoned cars, sidewalk issues, sewer backups, trees issues, I mean, I've had all that this week alone, for crying out loud, but anyway, I thought I would try the Citizens Response, and I called Mr. Sale and I gave him a few addresses, a few concerns that were brought to my attention, and I'm just gonna see how it plays out. I'm hopefully gonna get good results and good responses from the citizens themselves to say, hey, I don't know what you did, but it worked, but that's the ultimate goal, anyway. One other thing, I just want to thank my colleagues here. I know we always don't get along, we always have our little disagreements, but everybody here, the due diligence you guys are doing between the different liaisons, to the departments and the authorities you belong to, and just really for the common good of the city, I am, I know the citizens do appreciate what you guys are doing, what we are doing, what us. But thank you, guys, and keep up the good work. And Mayor, thanks for coming out tonight. Mid-year, at least it's on a positive note, we'd like to see a bigger positive like anybody else would, but always work to be done, and we'll move on from there. But thank you. With that, we'll take it over to our city controller, if she has anything to say. Mr. Betza, you, you're gonna...
I'm in the wrong seat. I have nothing.
That's good.
It's lonely over here.
We know, we know how to keep you quiet.
The most important things I had to say, I said at the beginning, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you. I think with that rose, we can close her down.
All right, City Council, Jones, City Attorney.
You look good over there.
Mr. Winarsky, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kowalski, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon.